Today we call this June twentieth. Meeting for the Horkons Council to. Of course, he's Colorado.
Forrest Frommey.
Here.
Dick Marshkey.
Here.
Jim Banzma. Marie Fenske.
Here.
Christine Schmidt.
Here.
Bryce Remy.
Here.
Please join the public.
To the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God. In the book of liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to hold a public, to open a public hearing? I'll just declare a public, an open, public hearing for Class A fermented malt beverage license for Dolgin Corp. At seven oh four Washington Street. Would you believe it's Dollar General?
Correct.
Jan five.
Uh.
Is there, is there something?
Second.
Bryce. All in favor, I oppose May for closing the public hearing.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Frommey.
Aye.
Dick Marshkey.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmidt.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to act on issuance of the Class A fermented malt beverage license for Dolgin Corp on seven oh four Washington?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, I oppose May for closing the public hearing.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Frommey.
Aye.
Dick Marshkey.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmidt.
Aye.
Declare a public hearing for the issuance of the Class B fermented malt beverage license for the Wetlands LLC at three twenty one Lake.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor, I oppose May for closing the public hearing.
Forrest Frommey.
Aye.
Dick Marshkey.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmidt.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Hearing is closed. Is there a motion to act on the license?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, I oppose May for closing the public hearing.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Frommey.
Aye.
Dick Marshkey. Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmidt.
Aye.
I declare open a public hearing for a Class C wine license at the same place, the Wetlands, at three twenty one East Lake Street.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, I oppose May for closing the public hearing.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Frommey.
Aye.
Dick Marshkey.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmidt.
Aye.
The hearing is closed. Is there a motion to act on issuance of a Class C wine license for the Wetlands LLC?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, I oppose May for closing the public hearing.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Frommey.
Aye.
Dick Marshkey.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmidt.
Aye.
I declare a public hearing open for issuance of a Class B liquor fermented malt beverage license for Rock. On ten West Lake Street. Any discussion?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, I oppose May for closing the public hearing.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Frommey.
Aye.
Dick Marshkey. Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmidt.
Aye.
Jan item eleven. Is there a motion to act on the issuance of a Class B liquor fermented malt beverage license for Rock?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, I oppose May for closing the public hearing.
Dick Marshkey.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmidt.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Frommey.
Aye.
The january twelve. Is there a motion to act on the council minutes of May twenty third and June eighth?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, I oppose May for closing the public hearing.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Frommey.
Aye.
Dick Marshkey.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmidt.
Aye.
Can you check to see if anyone signed up for the public hearing?
Nothing.
All right. Looks like we have no public appearances. Next on the agenda, personnel and finance committee report by Forrest.
Personnel and finance committee met June fifteenth, six P M. All members present. No public appearances. We approved our minutes for the main. Personal finance meeting. Motion passed. We had a motion for the request to move the twenty twenty three budgeted funds for Oak Hill Cemetery. Motion passed. Motion for the bills. For May. That motion passed. We set our next meeting for July eighteenth, six P M, City Hall, and adjourned at six oh seven P M. Thank you.
Next on the agenda would be Jim. He is running a little late.
I have a zoom in.
You, do you mind?
Do you want me to agree? I'll hit the high points. I hate being right too, so I'm gonna assume everyone else hates it too. Uh, there, nobody was absent when they met. They made a motion unanimously approved to remove the dish of park football field fence that is on your agenda tonight. They're waiting on dates for the mill and overlay projects. Sidewalk maintenance is ongoing. Had a discussion on grass and weed lengths. There was a D P W update provided, a water wastewater update provided. And they will meet again on July thirteenth at six at Cody's office.
Thank you. Very great.
Public Safety Committee met on June thirteen. All present. Motion to approve minutes. All voted aye. Motion passed. No public appearances. Best Run Safety, we're waiting on crossing light installation, safe routes to school. Discussion, Chief Yaki provided data for children in bus that needs to be looked at. Discussion about crossing guards and what the crossing lights will do when they're installed. Had a discussion on speed watch program. Discussion on open burning, fire pit ordinance. We had an emergency management update. Basic emergency management programs completed and they're gonna have a tabletop exercise in September of twenty twenty three. South Cedar and Gray Street update, they'll be removing the bushes so that you can see around the corner there. And there was a motion to approve operator licenses, which was carried, all voted aye. And then a motion to approve the liquor and fermented malt beverages to the ones that we just voted on. All voted aye, motion passed. Next meeting date is Tuesday, July eleventh at six P M at the Public Safety Building. And we all motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Park and Rec, Bryce.
The Park and Rec meeting was called to order at six P M on June fifth by Chair President Remy. Everyone was present except for Drew, Marshkey, and Carson. Boy, we had a motion. It would be seconded to approve last month's minutes. There was no public appearances. For the park support, summer mowers started last Tuesday and some issues with cracks being dragged over concrete. For the aquatics in our report, there was three hundred fifty four people that came on opening day and two hundred ninety eight people on the second. For the rec report, there is currently youth baseball games and youth softball games with ninety two kids between the two of them. There's a presentation from M S A on their services. There's a discussion on focusing on destination parks versus a community park. We brought up a QuickTrip Kira's grant that the Friends of the Horkon Parks will be applying for. It would ideally be for Bowling Green Park. Brought up another grant that is non-matching that could be applied to by the Friends of the Horkon Parks for rotary park replacement. Part of the idea of potential, this Addy Park, including a storefront playground. Discussion on a grant that'll open on twenty twenty four on trails. There is a motion out of that name, the Trail in Riverbend Park to My Best Friend Trail. It would be seconded, all in favor. We made a motion to meet on July tenth, since July third is kind of a holiday. And then we adjourned at eight oh eight P M.
Thank you. Plenary Commission, Dave.
Plenary Commission met in regular session with Mayor Moss presiding on June twelfth. Meeting was called to order at six P M. Members present, Moss, Marshkey, Sullivan, Beederman, Gullbeck, Vanderheide, Westemeyer, Ward, and Magnusson. Members absent were Ampton. Also in attendance were representative from Marine Park, Conco Engineering, and Roger, and Patricia Snyder. Motion by Westemeyer, second by Sullivan to approve the minutes of the May eighth meeting, all in favor. Public appearances by Chester Ward to review and discuss certified survey map for Horkon Hills LLC. Motion by Ward, second by Beederman to open a public hearing on the conditional use permit. Operating College in I two heavy industrial lot. District lot two, C S M number seven seven nine five portion of the parcel. Two three six one 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 five oh two four four oh oh two. W five three four six State Road thirty three, all in favor. Motion by Marshkey, second by Magnusson to close the public hearing for the conditional use permit. Motion by Gullbeck, second by Beederman to approve the conditional use permit operating college. In the I one heavy industrial lot two of C S M seven seven nine five portion of parcel. Two three six one 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 five oh two four four oh oh two. W five three four six State Road thirty three, all in favor. Motion by Vanderheide, second by Westemeyer to recommend a common council, a certified survey map, land division for Roger and Patricia Snyder. At W five nine eight zero State Road thirty three, parcel. Two three six one 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 six zero two four four zero zero two, all in favor. Motion by Westemeyer, second by Beederman to approve a site plan for M P T C fire training facility located. At Marshall Crossing Business Park, all in favor. Motion by Westemeyer, second by Beederman to approve proposed temporary and permanent signage for M P T C. Fire training facility located in Marshall Crossing Business Park, all in favor. Motion by Beederman, second by Vanderheide to adjourn, all in favor, meeting adjourned at six thirty eight.
Thank you, David. As far as my report, I really don't have any. Have. Jim, where at? Agenda item nineteen. I really don't have any. We're gonna get set up and then we're gonna do, we're gonna act back resolution. Twenty twenty three dash oh nine, which is the compliance maintenance resolution.
I handed one out.
You handed down the report.
Oh, yeah.
The resolution adopts the report.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty three dash oh nine.
Second. Is there any discussion on it? Otherwise Cody's gonna be presenting shortly.
No, we don't wanna have a discussion.
If you do wanna see some information on it, go to the last page. It gives us our grades per category. We actually graded, we're graded at a four point old experience grade like your grades in school. So we actually had a perfect score. We didn't even have to respond to any questioning because we had such a high score.
Great job.
Is that our first book, though?
It's been a while.
Good, good years.
Mostly thanks to the rating, or the rating studies that we're doing, really brought us into compliance.
You think it's the financial portion that blocks us down? Cody and his crew always do good work.
Question. Is there any other discussion? All right. If not, all in favor, I oppose May for closing the public hearing.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Frommey.
Aye.
Dick Marshkey. Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmidt.
Aye.
January twenty one.
Yep, that's my bad, I forgot to remember.
That looked like, really looked really familiar.
Actually, I was testing you all and you all.
The next is the January twenty two, which is acting on removal of fencing at the former Dish of Park. I mean, well, should we remove fencing at the former Dish of Park?
A second.
Is there any discussion on the fencing?
Maybe not any discussion, but I don't know if Cody wants to just give a little overview. Cause you have the, the pricing that we would save too by.
Yeah, so that, that fencing around the exterior is brought up to me by Scotty. Actually, it was the first time approach made brought up that this is via a cost savings force of fence, three quarters of it has gone into disrepair. It needs a bunch of work. We spent a bunch of time and money on killing weeds, weed eating, materials, fuel. It looked like just off the top of our head, what we came up with for hours spent in each plus some of the product. We'd be saving in the area of three thousand to thirty five hundred dollars a year by removing the fence.
Gonna just go ahead and scrap that, go ahead and say.
We'll scrap all of the old material, anything that was put in in the last five years or so. The newer stuff we'll keep for repairs or reuse in other parts, poles, everything we can. And then we will scrap out some of the older deteriorating fencing that we kept on patching and stuff at the shop.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? Not all in favor, I oppose May for closing the public hearing.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmidt.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Frommey.
Aye.
Dick Marshkey.
Aye.
Motion hearings. Agenda item twenty three is act on the naming of the walking path in Riverbend Park.
Anybody to make a motion to name the walking path in Riverbend Park My Best Friend's Trail?
My best friend, uh?
Yeah, thank you.
My best friend, like.
Like your dog. Like a.
Apostrophe S.
Did you ever make more sense?
It's my best friend.
Like singular best friend or multiple best friend? I guess, I don't know, either one.
No, I like my best friends with apostrophe S.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Like it's your dog's trail.
Yeah, you and another person. Or I'm with apostrophe S.
So my best friend, okay. You can take dog, right?
Mm-hmm.
Just making sure.
Isn't even officially up there? Isn't it Lurvy Street up until the end of the year, I told you so?
That is a road right away through there that has not been removed or anything. That is technically road right away. Is that the paved area from Washington going back?
That's a city.
It's a, yeah, it's a city road right away. That's where maybe you said you used to put extra asphalt and that it.
Well, you got, you got the sewer running underneath it.
That's what prompted the asphalt is the one I had to drag the jetter truck back there one night and then we're like, hey, it can be. Start using this byproduct to fill it and it worked.
You were using up what?
Yeah, we were using up a byproduct of our, our.
Our grind maintenance, yeah.
Maintenance program.
I don't know if you still need any more back there or not.
We're pretty well to the end of it back there.
Yeah, cause you did so much every year, right?
Yep. Yeah, you did so much every year and.
Why? I guess my question is what is the benefit of naming the path?
There is a grant that'll open in twenty twenty four that is a hundred percent non-matching the Friends of Parks groups. It just hasn't have a name to the trail, so that's the reason I wanna name it, so we can start applying for grants to approve it.
If you don't have a name on it.
Yeah, if you don't have a name on it, you can't ask for it.
You can't just call it a path.
The name came from, because we see a lot of people walking their dogs on there. It's a very dog friendly park, so we thought it'd be kind of an honor for the people who walk their dogs or pets.
Is there a second on the naming of the walking path?
I'll second it.
No. No.
Any further discussion?
No discussion. No.
On the naming of the walking path to Riverbend Park? If not, all in favor, I oppose May for closing the public hearing.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Frommey.
Aye.
Dick Marshkey.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmidt.
Aye.
Just trail.
Just trail.
Get another perk.
He's gonna keep your, keep your best friend, too.
Right, now. All right, agenda item twenty four. Act on requested for twenty twenty three budgeted funds from the Cemetery Association. Forbes.
So I make a motion to approve the transfer budgeted funds in the amount of eight thousand five hundred dollars for the Oak Hill Cemetery Association as requested.
Second.
This is half of their yearly budget. They usually get transferred twice a year. This is their first one. They usually do it in summer and then again, I wanna say November, December.
Great. Is there any discussion on it? That, closing the public hearing.
Forrest Frommey.
Aye.
Dick Marshkey. Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmidt.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
The next one, which on the item is to act on the salt storage building plans.
Would you like Don to call in? He offered to call in, he's still up in the Kekana area or. I can run through. I can run through. So this was something we went after. Our salt shed is currently out of compliance and is technically out of compliance right now. We have till December thirty first to move our salt supply over to a different building. This building was designed as thirty two feet long, fifty six foot wide. It has a concrete base and then a hoop structure top, much like you see in most of the county buildings. Our current building will hold two hundred tons of salt, which makes us a little vulnerable to supply chain issues. So we went up with the additional roadway and everything, we're looking at around six hundred tons. Shed.
So we're going from two hundred to six hundred?
Yes. We should be, we, I average, I guess, go through anywhere from like three to five hundred tons a year. And then once you're added roadway and we're doing a little better job, I think keeping the roads clean, how we do go through a little more. I think this is the proper size by what we had for calculations. Um, any other questions? It'll be located from the old salt shed. If you've been very hard, it'll be located directly on the east side of that.
Are there any questions for Cody? I'll make a motion. For the salt storage building plans.
As presented this evening? As presented this evening?
Yes, sir.
I'll second that.
I've seen him before, so I guess that's. Any further discussion on salt storage building plans? All right, closing the public hearing.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmidt.
Aye.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Frommey.
Aye.
Dick Marshkey.
Aye.
Do we have a motion to authorize to take the salt storage building project bid?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
The bids will be, or the advertisements will be six twenty nine and seven six with a bid opening on seven fourteen.
Do we have a? Speced completion date of this project?
Uh, it wasn't extended here, I believe it was like end of September.
September twenty nine.
Yes.
All right, any other discussion? All right, closing the public hearing.
Bryce Remy.
Aye.
Forrest Frommey.
Aye.
Dick Marshkey.
Aye.
Jim Banzma.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmidt.
Aye.
Next item is acting on a request for a contract extension for City View Street Utility Extension Phase One Project by Copland and Keenness.
Cody, I didn't have an opportunity to ask. Don, I have, and it's included in your packet, the letter that Copland and Keenness had written. They don't have a date in there that they'd like it extended to. Do you know?
Would you like me to call them?
Well, if.
They're down the tentative shipping date of July one. Yeah. So I would imagine they have it by the end of July. I, I know that we were having some trouble with the panel. Um, there was some bad information given to the panel contractor. And we worked through the problem, there was the wrong generator plug and some sizing issues with what was originally given to them.
I would, I mean, if you can get ahold of Don, I'm just thinking if it's their pleasure to entertain a motion to extend the. The due date that they may wanna.
Would you like me to put them on speakerphone or?
Yeah, I think you can just ask them. Unless you guys wanna hear. In the meantime, while he's waiting, I will let you know that even.
Hey, Don, one question we have.
It's very hard if a contractor does not meet their deadline and you want to try to put this group together and try to get any money out of them for not complying with that. It's not really gonna work, so.
I feel like it's still. Okay, follow the market for them.
Yeah, it was very hard to do it pre-COVID, so I can only imagine that after COVID, you know, post-COVID, you're probably never.
So it'll follow the phase two timing and completion date.
Being very negligent on their end, so just kinda wanted to put that out there and even what anybody was thinking.
The way of the world.
Okay. What is the lift station have to be operational for development to be? Okay.
I think it has to be an operational, it's pretty important.
Yeah.
Before I could consider.
Yeah.
That's a good question to ask.
Yeah, I think they were looking for a date to make a motion, so that's why I was asking. So we follow the second one, which is good.
You're okay.
Okay. Sounds good, thank you, Don. Or is it also probably right?
Lift station and takes care of people.
Just do it.
They're asking to follow the same completion date as phase two.
What about the stuff you built earlier in phase one? Does that mean you can't, you can't occupy those things?
Um.
No.
No, you can, it's just a gravel road. I mean, all like infrastructure is done and all that, they can, they're livable. So it's functional. It's functional, it's just we don't have the paving complete. And they were gonna pave it, which is actually better for us, is they pave it all in one piece, cause then we don't have the joints. That's.
Do you have a date on that?
I don't have the date, but he said it's, it's consistent with phase two is what they're asking for.
It's this.
So what we're looking for is a motion for a contract extension for City View Street Extension, Utility Extension Phase One Project by Copland and Keenness. With the extension being out to the completion of phase two.
Do you think, Cody, you think that's a long way away or not?
Town and country is actually ahead, or ahead of schedule, so I don't think it's very far away.
I mean, are you thinking another month or?
That's what I would think, they're doing concrete right now. I went up there today and they were starting to do the curb, we got our sidewalk.
I mean, when, when you're saying phase two, that means nothing to me.
Okay, it's, it's that second one that comes off.
I, I know what that means, but I mean, I don't know what date.
I don't know the date off the top of my head what phase two was. I don't even know where I would have that.
Okay. I could go find it if you really need to.
I think, I think referencing the completion of phase two is sufficient.
Consistent with phase two completion, it.
That.
That's what I heard.
I'm, I'm just saying, if it's four months away or if it's a month away, it's.
Yeah, it's different levels of speed.
We'll get, we'll get the back date.
I don't think phase two is gonna be completed until, till twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
I thought it was next year.
Yeah, next twenty-four, yeah.
So essentially they're asking for like a whole other.
I mean, that makes, if it's not till next year, that doesn't make any sense. It's just the paved pathway though. The, the, the station itself is functional. Um, I, I understand, but there's houses already. Back there.
Go ahead.
There's a motion on this.
Yeah. Is there any further, you wanna keep discussing it or?
I, I, I just would like to know the. I mean, if it's a whole year away, I don't like that. If it's two months away, I'm fine with it. We don't have the answer right now. It's, it's functional as of right now. I, I, it's functional, but it's not. Whether we wait a year for it to be paved or. Well, that, a year is way out of the question. That's when the whole project's gonna be done.
If you're really that curious, I can go across the hall. I can find the bid documents and we can look through the bid documents together and I will find the completion.
I, I'm just saying, if it's not till a whole year.
If we want to know the date, I can go find it. I just need someone to tell me to go get it.
Yes, go get it.
I know they're planning on paving yet this year, but I don't know what.
I'm just asking a question.
Absolutely. My question is.
What exactly are they?
I don't feel like I wear a sweater.
It's just paving your road, right?
Their lift station panel isn't complete, so we can't finish the lift station pumpers and the panel is not completed where they can install it. So the lift station's not functional yet. It has, on a different contractor than, they wanted to pave it all in one shot. They wanted to do phase one and phase two paving it all in one shot.
But will the sewerless operate out there without that station?
Nope.
So people can't even move in those houses that are in phase one right now?
So the houses, the first house that they're selling in phase one, people can use because that's on the gravity sewer going into, uh.
And is that the one on the burn? Or is that the?
Is that the one right next to Brown? That's the one right next to Brown. Now, all the rest of them are on that, that station, so we would have to get something going before they could occupy those.
So you can't, they can't even occupy the one that's along the burn, which is almost done.
Yeah.
Until this is done.
Yeah.
You know, that's twenty twenty-four, that's gonna be.
No, I, I know they're waiting on it. I just, the last time I talked to him, they were a few weeks out, but I haven't heard now in a couple of weeks.
Right. We'll go on a second here.
Maybe if you'd like to, I can call Don.
I just got fined again. Construction contracts are not my full plan.
I really thought the completion date was this, this year.
Yeah.
Phase two is then for next year. Or phase two is, well, somebody started like near and finished that year.
Cause we started phase two last year. They came over when it did phase two.
We're not that far from the road back there.
It's not. They're, they're putting down a sidewalk. Like, we're at the end.
You gotta go in back to the apartments and the cul-de-sac there. And then you gotta go up the hill, but it wasn't finished going up that hill.
Substantial completion date is August eighteen. Substantial completion date is August eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, and the date of readiness for final payment is August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. That is for City View Second Edition Phase Two.
Yeah.
Okay. Make sure you put that date in the.
I'm just gonna put.
No, I know.
The language. I don't need the.
So is it the homes, that's not gonna have the houses built till twenty-four, man?
That could be. That's very possible.
Oh, they still, they still, they kept the build whenever one insulted.
Right. They, they started in November last.
Infrastructure has to be in.
Yeah, this is just the, I'm gonna lose, which is good. All right, we have a motion by Jim and a second by Christine. Is there any other discussion on this? All right, Doc, please go to room.
Jim Banzman.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Remmy.
Aye.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Dick Marshke.
Aye.
The next item is act on a request for the extension of a license premise by the Rock.
So moved.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
That is for July fifteenth, as I've heard in your.
Is that the bowl races?
Yep.
Yeah.
You wanna do it both together, Marsh? Oh, I'm not saying it. It's deep on front of that bridge. Over your head. Go both of them to sink. Your stew with the. There's ten feet of water out there.
Or your pokers.
Okay.
Is there any discussion on that? Doc, please go to room.
Bryce Remmy.
Aye.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Dick Marshke.
Aye.
Jim Banzman.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
29 is discussion on ownership of golf course road. Jim, you wanna start?
Well, sure. Uh, yeah, first of all, for those that don't know who I am, I'm Jim. I call him one of the owners at Horkon Hills Golf Course. Can I get a show of hands of those that were not part of the council in two thousand fourteen? Okay, so we've got two people here that were part of the actual sale or were there. So I will give you some history of, of the sale so that everybody is kind of up to date. The golf course was owned by the city from, I believe, nineteen sixty-eight. It was built and owned by the city for all those years. In two thousand fourteen, the council gave Steve Knightsel, Mayor Knightsel, the opportunity to sell the course. And he negotiated all the, all the terms of the deal. And then the city council approved that deal when it was all done. Okay, so the, the council themselves were not actually part of the negotiations. They just approved the negotiations once they were done. Steve Knightsel was a very good, honest man. Um, and all, all the people in the council and the, and the, uh, previous mayors and stuff like that have all been, uh, very forthcoming. There was two groups that were interested in purchasing the course back in two thousand fourteen. We were actually not even interested in buying it. We were contacted by the city. Uh, we've owned six courses in the, in the last thirty years. Uh, we own West Bend Lakes and Cameroun now and this one. Uh, our track record was very, very strong. We've turned all six courses into viable courses. And we've never just dumped them and ran and stuff like that. So they approached us and we came and struck a deal. The, the other party that was actually trying to buy it was led by a gentleman by the name of Russ Schrader. Russ Schrader was a local, local, uh, person here in town. Uh, he owned several subways. He owned a bunch of di- different businesses. He was also on the board that was running the course at the time for the city. I have a letter here from Russ Schrader, uh, that he has wrote to, to you guys. Says, when I was bidding to buy the golf course, the drive into the course was considered a road. That was part of the negotiations between him and the previous mayor. I have correspondence from Steve Knightsel. I asked Steve, hi Steve, this is Jim Merkel from Horkon Hills. Could you respond to this text to verify that in two thousand fourteen during the purchase of the golf course from the city, the Gulf Road? Gulf Club Road was discussed during the sale process. You offered that road to us if we wanted it. We declined that offer and the city kept control of it. His response. Jim, yes, the statement is true. It was my understanding that the road from Main Street to the parking lot was listed as a city street. So your mayor, who had the opportunity to sell it, was selling it as that and thing. I was then told, because my attorney wrote up the sale and did not mention the driveway as a road, it's a driveway. Well, my attorney did not put into the purchase that I didn't want Main Street either. I own property on both sides of Main Street. We were told it was a road. Your next mayor, Jim Craig, who I've got a letter from, says, the sale of Rock River Golf Course was completed prior to the, to my term as mayor. As mayor, I was informed that the sale agreement was the road from Main Street to the golf course parking lot was the city's responsibility. The city would continue to ownership and would snowplow and maintain that road. I was formed this agreement and had been between the mayor and the new golf course owners. The sale of the golf course was approved by the previous city council. This agreement was followed during the next four years of my term. I went to the state, uh, transportation board and got their map. You guys have a map that you guys put into the state that you use to collect sales taxes from roads. It's against the law to put any roads on that map that are not owned by you. The data represents, and I've got a copy if you want it. This data represents the last certified mileage as corrected by Wisconsin DOT, which may have been used for part for past transportation aids. It's dated four one twenty-one. Golf course road is listed in that twenty-five point oh five miles on your map. This all came to fruition because I'm trying to break up two locks on the course so that I can be a permanent resident here. And stuff, but I have to get an easement to go down from, from where those locks would be to the road or to Main Street. I was told, I came to the board here two years ago and Mayor Griggs at that time was very happy and wanted to have that done. I didn't have the money to do it then. We were still trying to get the golf course. We've been there nine years now. I went to, to the plant, plant park commission three times before I started the project. Everybody was in pro- and was, uh, in favor of it. Then it was brought to my attention that the road wasn't actually broken off with easements and stuff like that. So I was told that I should get do a, uh, survey, survey map of the road and then, which I paid for, and get it all broken off. Now all of a sudden, it's not a road. Okay, and they want me to take it over and take everything. And I was told that, um, if, if I keep it as a road, that they would still give me the easements through it, but I can't give it easement to something I don't own. Okay, so if that is not viable, I don't want it. It should stay a road. It was a road. It was promised to me as a road. It's been maintained as a road for all these years. And I'm asking to, so I gotta go back. I've spent ten thousand dollars now. Even though I came three times before to get everything straightened out so that, and I did exactly what I was told to do. And now all of a sudden, it's not, it's a driveway. And so we gotta get clarification because the park plant commissioner, the, that board is tied up because they don't know if it's a road or if it's. I think so. We're back here to get that determined. So that's the history of it. Do you have any questions for me? I'll be more than happy to, to view. Um. I don't know of anybody that in the last nine years now, the agreement is that the course would stay, we would keep it a golf course for five years minimum. And the golf, and the city would have first read refusal to purchase it back if I try to sell it within ten years. Your website is not the most functional. I cannot find any zoning rules on your website. Now, it could be me, cause I'm sixty-two years old and I'm not computer literate. I've gone to the county site. They don't even list Horkon as a city because they're, they're not with zoning rules. Um, it's not attached. So I don't even know, I was told, but I don't know this for a fact, I was told that I could have two houses on the lot because I believe it is zone institutional three or something. I don't know. Um, which you could have three houses actually on the lot. One could be for the administrator, one for the grounds and one for clergy. But I don't know that for a fact, cause I can't find any of the zoning rules. So first we gotta decide what's happening with that road. It's kinda funny. Go, go to Google and ask for directions. They'll tell you to turn on Gulf Club, Gulf Club Road.
What did you say deemed that as a road this last time or this?
Cody, you wanna answer that?
Okay, if, if you're done, I'll, I'll take over from what I've found. So I guess to start off, on your desk, I put a, a letter from the city's attorney. It's addressed to the mayor. This is something I requested after multiple phone conversations with him. And it reads, the question has been raised to who is responsible for maintenance of the road to the Horkon Hills Golf Course? The information that I have includes certified survey maps, copy attached, indicating that this is not a city roadway. In addition, I have reviewed the November twenty-fourth, twenty fourteen offer to purchase and December first, twenty fourteen counter offer, which constitutes as documentation of purchase and sale, copies attached. These also indicate it is a private road. So I guess in, in all the hours I've spent with this, cause I, I wanna know the facts. I didn't wanna take, you know, word of hearsay, cause it, it seemed to be getting very convoluted, so. First thing that we noticed was the address for the building is three thousand Main Street Road, not three thousand Golf Course Road, three thousand Main Street Road. And that is actually in the sale, um, document in line number four. The map of the property is a contingent on the buyer that is also in the sale document, line one forty. So that means they would have been responsible for the mapping to the, to, to verify. Uh, the entire, entire contract included all the amendments and that's in line four thirteen through four fifteen. Uh, this contract was drafted by attorney Trivon, who is the Horkon Hills attorney. That is in line four eighty. That was, so our attorney didn't even draft the document. There are no amendments for the road in the addendum that was attached to the document, which we have copies of too. The Dodge County GIS system does not show this as a road with road right of way. That was the first thing that tipped us off to, well, is this a road? Is this not a road? The driveway while the city owned was on the gas tax map, so that's what Jim was talking about, that map that shows it as a road. It was on the gas tax map. Much as, they're exactly the same as Riverbend Park. We count that as Riverbend Park Road or whatever they named it because it's city mileage. When the city owned it, it was based on city mileage. Now, the gas tax map, if your city, your supervisor is responsible to make any changes. It's not an automatic system with the government. You're, you're putting all the faith in one person to take a red pen and check off the road that it's on or off this map. And it is very common in the state of Wisconsin to have errors in this. Many, many places do, you know, obviously it happens. So that hopefully will explain some of that. The driveway could have been left, uh, on the gas tax map, gas tax map instantly after the sale of the factory, causing it to show up on the maps with a name as a private road. Should not have happened, but it did. There are no road opening permits pulled by the golf course when they repaired their sprinkler system. So I don't know if that was an error or that you guys thought it wasn't a road as well.
No, we talked to Magnussen. Magnussen told us we could do it and then he came and repaired the road after we did it.
Okay, fair. The Horkon Hills is currently, uh, trying to dedicate the road to the city, so currently hasn't been dedicated with, talking with attorney. Clearly, it would have had to been a council decision. It couldn't have been a singular person. It couldn't have been a mayor. It had to be a council decision and we have found no documentation supporting that, neither has he. Um, the current driveway is not up to city standards, uh, specifications. The road width currently is around twenty-two feet, depending where you measure it. Um, as typical city road is thirty-seven to forty-four feet normally. So I'll, I'll touch on that later, but that, that's just one of the facts upfront. And there also is a cost associated with repair and maintenance on these roadways. It's fairly high cost. So the questions I have, and this is more for you, Jim, because I'm, I'm not trying to say one way or the other, but would it be legal to drive, if we would, uh, if the road be dedicated to the city, would it be legal to drive golf carts down the road? Um, if, and if so, would they have to be individually registered? Cause that could be a large cost to the golf course. Would the driveway have to be brought up to city? Specifications increasing with storm infrastructure, curb gutter prior to being dedicated and possibly down the road sidewalk? Because if you build houses up there, it depends what the model is. And I'm not saying this group, but it opens you up to that for the future, which according to our ordinance is the way I read them, it would have to be brought up to city specifications prior to being dedicated.
So are you saying, are you saying then that the house that I wanna build on the property inside is gonna have to have city sidewalks?
No, I'm not saying that. I don't know the answer to that.
And you're telling me that a golf cart can't cross that road because if it would be a city street, so.
That was a question. I, I don't know the answer to that, but I'm just saying questions for, for more discussion. Uh, would they increase sidewalk, if, if we would increase it, we'd put sidewalks, curb and gutter, and we definitely have to increase the road width. Would that cause an issue for play of golf? Cause I know that some of your T-boxes would be inside of that. And then another question I had, um, does the CSM show a standard sixty-six foot right of way? It's not called out in there? Because that is what I looked up in our ordinance book. That is what's required. And then is there a problem if we have golf course equipment such as T-boxes, sand traps, et cetera, inside the sixty-six foot road right of way? Because we don't let people build, you know, I'm, would that be an issue with this? Would that be an issue with this CSM as well? And the other question I have is, could the easement start at Main Street Road for the homes and go all the way to the homes? It would just be a longer easement than what was being asked for. One of the other comments, some of the other comments I have on it, "The city could put sidewalk in on both sides of the road due to it being residential after the homes are built and assessed to the property owner." Like I said, maybe not this group. If, the way the ordinance is read, that is definitely a possibility. "If the driveway is brought up to city spec, it will need stormwater management plan. This may include ponds, ditches, as well as storm infrastructure. To mill and overlay the existing driveway on the budget or the numbers that we get for budgetary purposes, it looks like it would be around $200,000." "If to bring the driveway out to city spec, it would exceed $500,000." "If made to a road, it will be open and accessible to the public 24/7." "There is a possibility of people parking cars on the road at that point. And if we would sign it with the signs effect plate." "And another option, in my opinion, is to leave the road as is, as in for the driveway as is, with no city influence on the driveway."
So how long is this road?
It is, oh, it's like 657 yards, I believe, was the measurement.
A third of a mile?
Yeah.
In that area? So how much money have we collected off that piece of property in the last nine years?
I would let the state tell me how much that I owe them back because I don't know how they calculate out the money.
I'm just...
I'm also just letting you know, we don't get that much in road aids.
Well, we must get something.
It's not that much, and for that small of an area?
I'm asking the question.
And then, we don't calculate road aids, the state does. So that would be a question for the state.
But you collect it.
They issue the check.
Am I allowed to do any kind of process in the process? So, question. I get that that's all a possibility. I get, I get. No, you're just, you know, throwing some big numbers out there that I could maybe be on the hook for. Do you have any city streets that were redone lately that don't have curb gutter or sidewalks that were just redone?
No.
None?
No.
So where Magnusson lives, that doesn't have...
That was a mill and overlay. That was not a full reconstruct.
Okay. So what would constitute a full reconstruction of that road?
Because the fact is, if you read our spec, our standard spec, which is in the ordinance book, you would have to have 12 inches of aggregate underneath the roadway, which then to widen that roadway to make it able to be dedicated per city ordinance, you would have to have a full reconstruct.
You have no roads, you have no roads in the city right now that don't need that spec? That's the only, that's the only one?
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying when they get to a full reconstruct, we bring them all up to spec.
Technically, we don't own that road. So if you were to dedicate it to us, then it would, the design requirements of this section and Section 14170 shall be applicable to all streets and roads that are to be dedicated to the city, regardless of whether such streets or roads are part of a new subdivision or land division.
So the misrepresentation of the sale. You're saying that, and I know Steve Nitzel is a very honest man. You're saying that he misrepresented the sale at the time. And my argument is...
I'm not saying it, you are.
No. I've got people that, including Steve, that said he sold it as a road. Okay? So you're telling me that he misrepresented what the city owned?
I'm saying there's no documentation.
Yeah, there's no documentation.
There's nothing.
The attorney could find support that way.
There's not even notes anywhere. There's nothing.
Okay. Okay.
There's not, I mean, I don't have any. I've not found any in any minutes. I've not found any in any offers to purchase. The attorney doesn't have anything?
So Steve's word means nothing. No one's word means nothing.
I didn't say that. You're saying that.
Okay. I get nothing else to say. Does anyone here have any questions?
I think the city has decided to go against this, but we have operated that as a road for the last, how many years?
That is correct. Because we all did think it was a road.
Yeah, I know. And we have collected money off of it. I don't know how much, whatever. But if we collected money off his driveway...
The state would send us an invoice, and we'd have to issue them a check back for any funds they had provided us.
I know that this is common because there's a lot of human error involved.
Well, I'm just saying. I think the city has decided, you know, long ago, that it was a road. Ever since it was going on, it's been a city road.
For nine years, or since the golf course was built?
Yeah.
Which isn't...
And, I know. That's what I'm saying. My opinion is, it's been a road. It should always be a road.
I always thought of it as a drive. That just for the golf courses, that means streets that are above that road.
That I never knew, but I knew the city maintained it, plowed it, did everything for all these years.
Well, it makes sense that we would have done it up to 2014 before we sold it. And after we sold it, that would have been previous management that would continue that maintenance.
That's where...
I think that's where the human error comes in.
I would like to throw one more thing in there. Okay? Just a little thing. When we bought this in 2014, the sale went through actually on December 31, according to paperwork. December 31. On January 2nd or 3rd, I got a phone call from somebody that asked me if they could date it January 1 because that was the agreement with the actual company and everything set up as January 1, and they want it on December 31. So it could be added to the tax rolls one year early. And I said, "That was the agreement, so yes, not a problem." Because that was what the agreement was. But the paperwork was wrong and stuff. And so I paid taxes one year early because that was the agreement. But apparently, that isn't part of the agreement, so.
I've seen the city of Horicon do a lot of things for a lot of businesses. And I'm really disappointed that we are not helping or dealing with this one. This is an ongoing city business which we sold. I'm very disappointed if we don't wanna...
That's why it is here before you this evening.
I'm just, I'm stating my opinion, Kristen.
And Cody and I are just presenting you information.
Yeah, I know.
We're not telling you what to do.
Unfortunately, then we can't undo whatever the rule of the law passed or whatever people...
No, but I'm stating my opinion. I'm not pointing it at you, Kristen. I'm pointing it at the whole city for not having everything documented.
Yeah, I agree.
That's where I'm going.
There's no documentation.
That's what I'm saying. I'm very disappointed that it wasn't documented. And the practices that the city has followed since make it look like it's a road.
Yeah. And now the hard part is, is to make it so you can follow your ordinance for 1-71 for declaration. It appears that you will have to bring it up to city specifications.
Not if you don't change anything. We don't have to. We don't change city streets until they are necessary.
But with the dedication, not, because not changing it, if the road is to be dedicated, in that ordinance, it states what it has to be prior to dedication.
Why would you dedicate it? It's already a road.
No, it's not, it's not a road.
It's not...
I guess that's the facts. I can't help that. That's what the attorney says. That's where we're at. I just, I can't.
I know where you're at, but I know it's been a road for, on the map.
I can only give you, I can only, but even like the address, 3,000 Main Street Road, that doesn't mean anything.
If I can show you an address from the city that says it's not 3,000 Main Street Road? Because some of their paperwork says it's 3,001 because it's not right, so...
But it's still Main Street Road.
I don't care. It's two different addresses. You can't have two addresses for the same street or same building. So even that's wrong.
Is there any further discussion on this?
I just wanna say, I think we can all agree that this council, you know, you saw how many hands were raised that are...
I know, you didn't have any.
Yes, so now we're kind of, you know, dealing with the mistakes, not mistakes, however you wanna call it, of our, you know, pre-council. So we're, yeah, and you...
I get it.
This is the first I've heard of it.
That's fine, I'm not upset with you.
Yeah, so we just have to think about, what do we do from here? That's fair to all, right? So I think that's the spot where we're at now that all the information's been shared.
We're trying to make a real dedicated effort now to do things in the right way, by the right way. Maybe that's just me personally. But I also know I don't have a say in this. I wanted to bring it to the people that did, rather than in the past, where it was the mayor. It wasn't Steve's call. He can negotiate like what we did, but the actual decisions have to be made by council. Because far as what I've learned in the last two years, like they approve or give, say, myself and Kristen the right to negotiate. We did it in Green Park, we've done it with others. But I can't handshake anything. I have to bring it to them and let them approve it. I don't know what happened back then. And I don't see it extraordinarily well, too. I don't think he acted in malice in any way.
But the problem, the one problem is, what's being held against me is my attorney didn't write in that we didn't want the road when it was told to us it was a road. We don't need to say we don't want the road because it was told to us it was a road. And that's where it's my attorney's fault because he didn't say, "I don't want the road." It wasn't, it was mute to us because we were told it was a road. Everything indicating said it was a road.
I think it's not just one issue. I think there's multiple issues. It's not just that one issue, in my opinion.
Nobody asked you...
I'm gonna keep my mouth shut. You guys are...
I do have a question. Nobody asked you, listen, why don't I?
Because I don't want the expense of it.
And that's the one thing I think that a lot of people do is that they don't wanna have that, that now the taxpayers are paying the expense for your business and your house. I mean, that's...
Do what you gotta do.
I will say, my parents went through a similar thing with their subdivision. They bought property on an old Applewood shirt and then found they were in, and it was the same thing. So they ended up just putting up all the property that was there and built, and they divided the cost of the road that went in, divided the houses. I mean, I've seen it that way. It sucks. Maybe make a five-year payment plan, but...
Yeah, but that's still, it's still a private drive.
Where can I find what it's zoned and what it can be zoned for? How do I find?
All you have to do is come into City Hall and ask.
Okay. I'll be there tomorrow morning.
Don't, there's, I have one other comment. I'm not sure that we wanna act on this. I think there should be some negotiations or something. I mean, we can say it's a road or it's not a road. But...
You can make that decision.
I think the city...
Well, you don't have to take an action.
Yeah, we don't have to.
Well, I'm looking at what's on, yeah.
You never have to act on anything.
No. But what I'm saying, I really think there should be some kind of negotiations or... I don't even know what you wanna call it, but...
I would wanna know who I'm negotiating with and who has the power to...
Yeah, that's, I mean, we have the power here.
I can actually answer that.
Just a second. But if we decide it's a road, then Cody decides to fix it, and it's paid totally by him.
Well, that...
That's what, I don't wanna make a decision that's gonna hurt him or help the city.
The facts are, to dedicate the road, it has to be brought up to city spec. The only people that can dedicate a road as a road are the city council. The only people. There's no negotiation. This is straight from attorney clear. So like I said, I can answer that.
But you understand what I'm saying is, if we decide to make it a road tonight?
I don't know that you have all the information. Do we know that it's a 66-foot right-of-way? You know what I mean? You don't have, there's a lot of information there that's not present.
That's exactly what I'm saying here is...
But did we answer his question? Did we? I don't think we answered Jim's question.
What, run that... I have no idea what my question was anymore.
He was just wondering, who does he negotiate with?
Oh, it has to be council.
Yeah.
So I don't talk, I don't talk to the mayor anymore. I talk to the council.
But what I'm saying is, how can we make a flat debt decision without knowing what the financial implications on him or the city? There's a lot more to this. It's not a four...
I agree with you, Derek. I think there's more research that needs to be done that the implications are, what the impacts can be to the city. I think as it stands, right now for me, is that it is not a city road based on what our lawyers tell us. So for us to make it a city road, I don't think, I know I'm not ready to do that tonight. I think there's more information, I need more research as far as what that costs and impacts to us. You make it a city road, and then you have law enforcement's gonna have to patrol it, which they already do. Yeah.
Well, and if you were to make it wider...
The cops don't go out the...
We do building checks.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You patrol it.
So, I mean, there's other questions that I would have as well in making this an actual official city road, putting it on the books that way. So I'm not ready to add. I think I know a heck of a lot more now than I did 15 minutes ago and what was going on and some of the history behind it. Here and it's here and there. I think I have some other questions for probably Cody. Probably other things to start in the DPW as far as what it would mean for that road to be referred to become a city road and go through some of the committees and figure out what some of the impacts are. Safety as far as patrol, DPW as far as development, engineering of it, and what we'd have to do to actually put it on the books. It's gonna have to be mapped and engineered. We have to, does Cody mention bring it up to our specifications for a city road? And what that cost and implications are.
Well, my biggest thing is, I don't want this to be a big, major expense for anybody. That's some, well, no. I mean, we can make it as big an expense as we want.
Well, it's gonna be an expense to somebody.
Yeah.
When you purchase property, there's a responsibility that, okay, what do I have here? What do I have to get it? And I'm not, I can't verify whether the paperwork in 2014 was properly done or not, but I guess...
But you know what I'm saying? I don't wanna see somebody have to foot out $500,000 or 300 or...
I agree with that, but on the other hand, I'm the guy that's saying, okay, we can't put a parking lot here on our old property because we're trying to fix roads. I mean, we're up to our neck in comparing what we have, much less taking on more. With that, that's where I'm at.
I agree with Van's, like everywhere. We're tight in the playgrounds, you have no money to fix.
Yeah.
It's not just one item, it's multiple.
Sure. I agree with the money situation, but I also think that it resonates poorly that there are two prior mayors that say that it might be a road.
Yeah.
I think that, you know, I mean...
I just didn't know what it would take if we, you know, I just didn't know what it would take if we're, you know, if we go the route of correcting that.
Right.
Because somebody obviously didn't check a box. And whether it's your lawyer didn't put it in, our lawyer didn't catch it either, whatever the case says.
My lawyer didn't put it in because it wasn't an issue because we were told it was a road. Have you ever bought a house?
Yes.
Did you, did you, did you have your sales, did you have your sales representative say that you didn't want the road that you thought was a road?
I've never bought.
No, because you were told it was a road. So why would you put in there? You don't want to buy the road.
Okay. Because my only question I had is, um, why didn't they do a title search on the property?
What do you mean?
Either, either side. I mean, I, I just put everything into a trust with my, uh, my wife, my daughter, myself, and uh, Porter had, had one piece of property himself. But when we bought it from my dad, we still did a title search on the property, make sure that I wasn't, that our trust wasn't going to run into anything.
It's, it's the, in our contract, map of property is contingent on the buyer. That's line one forty of the contract.
I'm done. Okay, let's do what we're gonna do.
Can we find out what the financial impact would be for paying back money? Just so that we know what that number is. Somehow is there a way to ask for that from the state or how? I'm just curious because I don't, I mean, I know you said it's not much, but I don't really know what that is.
I can go about trying to figure it out.
We can't, we try to find out. I mean, even if it's an estimate, at least we have the data to look at.
Well, for the sake of time, is any, is anyone interested in taking an action on Gulf Coast Road?
No.
I'm just thinking if, if, if the council would decide that it was a road when it was sold.
You wouldn't be the only one who would know.
Yeah, I know. But the mayor did it. I, we didn't do it. We just okayed the sale.
The council did not have anything.
We did not. We were not included. We just okayed the sale. But if we, as a council, okayed what suppose, supposedly happened back then, which I don't know, I'm just read, listened to a letter that came from the mayor and you could leave it the road as it is.
But can you accept the dedication without the road being brought up to standards? And the way the ordinance reads, I don't believe you can.
But if it was a road, if, if we agree that it was a road back then.
Nope, no, you'd have to do something because the ordinance says in order to dedicate it, which is what CSM that Jim brought was, it would have to be.
Why would it, it was already named?
It's not.
It was back then.
They put a name on it for the gas tax map. I, I.
I, I, I know. I'm, I'm up in the air too. I don't know what to do.
Well, with no action on Gulf Coast Road, sorry. Yeah, I guess we'll move forward with the agenda. Next is the update discussion on potential park equipment replacements. Good morning.
Thank you. Kristen, do you have those images?
I do. Hold on, I'm sorry. I just did. We can share. One for each half of the room. Big pretty pictures.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kristen, the subcase, the subpictures for me. Deep Park Board.
Come on. I feel like you like each other.
So the goal of the Parks Board is, we could just stick a playground there and that'd be all fine and dandy, but we want to have something unique, something like Waterworks Park in Beaver Dam. Or the Zip Line Park in Iron Ridge. Uh, so these playgrounds actually came to us by residents who has a family who works for a playground company. And he said he could do some kind of discount for us because we're kind of in desperate need. We don't know what that is yet. But we just started getting some of the pricing back on some of these. Uh, I will say the Parks Board really liked, there is a crane one, so it's got like a slide attached to it. It's something unique. It's something you don't see everywhere. But I know as a council, we've talked about where we are looking for those. So that is one item. Another item too is I've had two and actually three businesses now reach out about grants and then one offering private funds. So those ones, we've been kind of considering a drop in playground, just to put something there that doesn't have to be as large or something like that. But I wanted to share this tonight because I know you've all kind of had questions on where we are with this. This is where we currently are.
What's the cost?
The crane came in at two twenty. Which is.
Which one is that?
That is the other picture.
Sorry, can we get a goose?
That is the crane.
That is the crane. It's pretty cool.
I honestly, I thought they were.
Is that top corner of your wheel?
Yes, this is from above. It's actually pretty large too.
Is that wood or metal?
Wood. Um, he did say that they have, and Cody can back me up, uh, they have warranties on it. Most of their stuff lasts fifteen to thirty years, as long as you upkeep it. And then it is actually also a, do you remember the type of wood he said it was, Cody?
Is it like tree? It must be some kind of fancy tree.
Do you remember the kind of wood he said these were out of? It's, I can't remember the tree name, but he said it lasts longer than other trees.
I cannot. No, it's like a.
Cedar or?
Black hickory or something like that.
Black hickory is.
I would say it's started with an A. It's really hard, dense wood, I, I.
Yeah. I can't think of it off the top of my head, but he does say that this lasts.
Well, so how much, how much?
Are they all wood options?
Two twenty, he said, alder? So it's all.
So it's two twenty for the crane. Then you have smaller ones too. And some of their stuff is a little bit lower end. Uh, the one I really liked was like four stories tall, but it's like half a million. So I was like, nope, you don't need that part part. But some of the other ones are a little more reasonable.
Are they all wood options? Probably.
He did say we can substitute for metal too, but that raises the price a lot.
No. It's hardly.
It's driving me nuts because these come out of us.
It's not cash.
Yes. It's aspirin. Didn't think that was hard.
So it could be a wood that we don't even have here.
I don't think it says human either.
Would anything change, maybe? Just look at it.
Any talks of like doing like a skate, skate park or anything?
So there have been discussions on Facebook, but I've encouraged residents to come to our parks meetings and I've had zero residents come to parks meetings and zero emails and zero phone calls about a skate park. Um, but I would like to still encourage residents, if you want something, contact me. I'm pretty friendly, I think. Maybe I laugh too much, I don't know, but.
Does anybody have any other questions for Bryce? Is there really any other thing?
I think you're going in the right direction, Bryce. I appreciate all the hard work that Cody has put into this.
It's all Bryce. I am really sorry. I can't remember the type of wood that is. It's going to drive me nuts though.
I will ask and find out, but I feel bad because I'm always like, what are you going to meet with a playground vendor? I'm crazy like, no.
No, it's always cool to see the different stuff, but I, from what I remember, the wood, it was a very dense, very long lasting. It was similar to like an oak or a that type of material. Yeah. Just that solid wood. I cannot remember the name after the life of me.
I cannot remember the name either. He did say there's playgrounds in our area that are similar to this.
I was going to say, oh, was this the one that did a place in Oconomowoc or?
Yes, he did a place in Oconomowoc. There's a place in Cedarburg that's been there twenty-two years and still looks new.
Have you gone to visit anyone yet from school?
I have on accident.
Oh.
I did. He sent me a list and I was like, oh, I love that playground. Uh, they did the Menominee Park Recrush and Ashcrash.
Oh, I love that park.
That park is awesome. That's way more than we ever need. Uh.
This is the company that that woman contacted you in.
No, it was a sales guy.
Oh, he's just a sales guy, okay.
The parent company is out of Swiss River. So everything's manufactured. He also said if we were to order, they have a higher, or a lower lead time than competitors. So he said you're looking about four to six weeks for a playground to come in, whereas competitors are currently at a minimum of three to five months, which Cody and I have heard. That is pretty accurate.
I guess if you thought, Bryce, like as far as, you know, fundraising, coming up with the grant money, all that stuff. Have you thought about like a limit, like if, if we can't fundraise in the next, by, you know, such and such a year, we might lower our price of what we're looking for as far as, you know, to, I don't want to say go cheaper, but you know what I mean? Find other equipment that we can actually afford with the money that is raised.
Don't, I, I think that's a good idea to go with a, to go with a budget friendly type of, uh, that way at least if you come into budget season, you have something to present like a feasible.
Yes, I did originally want to start that estimate, but I was told kind of like, oh, obviously we were told our state budget number. So this is just kind of to get you guys a feeler of what we're looking at. They do have cheaper options. They're not as cool. They're a little smaller, like they have a dragonfly of like really big eyes. But this is kind of an example of what we have to us. Uh, one of the businesses that was interested is Addy Park and Horkum Bank. They have a little mini storefront that you can put any business name you want on it. So it would be like a small kid playground. I can say Horkum Bank. So that was what we were looking at for that, but.
Oh, so they're interested in that company too?
They're interested in working with us to get something. They just said, give us ideas.
Okay.
Uh, so I'm kind of doing the groundwork with Cody. I probably killed that poor guy.
No, it's all good. That's what I'm here for.
Yeah. I will have some other cool stuff hopefully soon. Uh, there's a couple quotes we're waiting on. We did get two quotes back when Kingman was here. It just never made it until we had those playground inspections and he was like, this is them, but he would say it'd be about a fifty percent increase. So we'd be looking at like a hundred twenty and a hundred fifty for those, but I can send you all that email if you want.
When you have bids on the issue for going?
No. I think we're still waiting on, is that the stress test or the hammer test?
They sent back some, some documentation that was incomplete. I sent it over to MSA to have them double check it because we had outside vendor look at it and they were like, we, they gave you nothing. So I'm trying to get back in touch with them to see what they're actually going to provide us for what we paid. And what the next steps might forward to be.
Feel like it's kind of like talking to my daughter sometimes, just don't get all the facts right away.
Great. Any other questions for Bryce?
Thank you.
Thank you. Jan thirty-two is an update on the police department accreditation by.
I apologize for being late. I have a quick, poor presentation I've been creating for you guys. I know it's been a long evening, so I will leave it fast. So as you all know, I've been really appointed chief as a year ago. I was in chief for over thirteen months and I couldn't really make any changes during that period. And one of my goals was to have the police department become accredited police department. Um, so what better time to do it now because I'm still in the process of changing our policies over to LexiPole, which LexiPole is a living, breathing document. And it's online for the officers. So a little bit about the accreditation program. What is accreditation? What are the benefits and what's the process? So the accreditation process starts with actually looking at your police department, looking at your policies and how do you measure your police department's progress? So I'm doing that is accreditation starts with a standard. So a standard we will learn in a little bit is a law. So from this standard, you have to create a written directive. And then from that written directive, you have to show that you're following your written directive, which comes from your standard. So what happened is back in I'm not going to really follow this. So what happened is back in June of twenty twenty, President Trump issued an effective order to all, to our, um, attorney generals for the use of force policy to be accredited to move forward with grant funding. Since then, the attorney general has came down the pipeline and majority of the police departments, including us, have that standard met for our use of force policy. And from that extended into, um, extended into body worn cameras. So if you go on our, you go on our webpage, you'll see that our use of force policy is posted. Our body worn cameras are posted. And then another thing it came down to, too, is we had to be in compliance of complaints. Um, in our lobby, we have a complaint form that Clear has gave a blessing to. And now it's a no knock entry policy warrant that we have to keep data on to continue to get federal or grant funds. And moving forward, they have told us that in the, the next filing year of twenty twenty-four, going forward, you're going to see the same direction, wanting police departments to have a written directive, which is a policy showing that we are following it. And there's no other way to show it unless there is an accreditation company or affiliate that will come in, do your audit, see that you have this, have the law, have the standard, have the written directive and you are following it. So with that, I looked at the costs because right now, this all started back in nineteen seventy-eight with the Wisconsin, the international Wisconsin, or international chiefs of police. They developed CLIA. A lot of police departments went with CLIA back then. But that's international. Each state has their own accreditation program because each state does not have like the same laws or same definitions of like use of force. So Wisconsin has WILIA. In comparing the cost, I already paid the hundred dollars to get started because I had to do the accreditation for the use of force policy to move forward to get grant funds. I already paid the three hundred dollars annually fee to be core certified. The core certified versus what the sheriff did. The sheriff did the full certification of I believe it was like over two hundred some proofs. Ours would, is sixty-five proofs with a hundred, or sixty-five written directives with a hundred and sixty-six proofs. So we are meeting the standards that we need to meet for a population of our size for a police department. So it's three hundred annually for the cost for CLIA to start it up is eight thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars and an annual fee of three thousand four hundred and seventy cents. So I'm moving forward with WILIA, but I just wanted to give you guys an idea of what accreditation is. In the back of your PowerPoint, because I don't want to bore you with all PowerPoint, is our use of force standard. So that's the law. And it reads in there what we have to comply with. It says, you know, the person each person in charge of a law enforcement agency shall prepare a written a policy or a standard. So here's our standard. It's going to say draft on the bottom because with LexiPole, we get updates. And recently LexiPole has updated everything to fit accreditation program for WILIA. So that's why it's going to say draft right now because I have to go in there to see what has been changed. And then what I do is I prove it. I get sent out to WILIA officers. They read this. They have a, a test to take to prove that they have rest, they read this, they understand it, and it's covered for the city. So going through accreditation, you show them the standard, you show them your written directive and like if we would have a use of force, I would show the officer a report that we are complying with our policy. So that's how it all goes. So what it is, is just another professional checkmark stating that your police department is top notch. Um, liability, I, I, Kristen, look into it. It's, I'm not a hundred percent complete with LexiPole. There could be a decreased cost in insurance. But it's just knowing that your police department is top notch for following the standards via written directives and we can show.
And accreditation gives you access to additional grants.
And right now it's monitoring, but like you can see the direction. I mean, first it's just use of force. Now it's our body cameras. And now it's our complaints. We have to have our complaints somewhere where people can just fill it out and add it in. And now it's the no knock warrants. Right now, the state every month I have to send in a report to TRACs for the use of force if we have it or not. So the state is already reporting. So the state is already reporting to IBR that here's our use of force, here are the, where it's all happening, you know? So now they want no knock entry warrants to be tracked. Well, right now, the state has not figured out a way to track that, so right now, yeah, I know for our department we don't do many, but I have created an Excel spreadsheet. And then I was just recently told that our records management system, we can code it where we can look up no knock warrants and I'll show all the addresses. So I, it's a coding thing for our records management. So basically accreditation is just another check that your police department is running smoothly, obeying all the standards which are in law, that it's just-
So the, this is the Wisconsin one, the WILIA, you said there was an international one?
Yeah, that's the CLIA.
The CLIA?
Yeah.
So that, is that like international, like throughout, is national to the U.S. or through the world?
Through the world, that's where, it was created in nineteen seventy-eight, it'd be a national, I'm not a member of that club yet. But their standards are a little bit different because even like Illinois don't have the same definitions of use of force. Everybody's use of force definition is a little bit vague and a little bit different and that's where Wisconsin Chiefs Association, I think I have it in here, when they created this accreditation program. And doing extra research, because I knew you guys wanted to look at costs, Illinois has their own separate nation for their state, they created. Oh, and then the networking, because I, I wasn't here last council meeting when, um, Devin was getting, or, uh, officer Donnie was getting sworn in because I was doing the accreditation. I was the assessor, because when you join up for this, you need accreditation manager and an assessor. So then you can pay back by being an assessor, you can pay back by being a part of the organization that goes in there and it's also networking. I did that on my own time, usually we do that on our own time and I know I miss this growing in, which I hardly ever used to talk to me, but going there, it was a networking and what I brought back was, um, where to see slot. I have this big sheet of paper that I give to the victims, well, here they have this pamphlet. And I brought back ideas to our police department on how to change and prevent some things. So it's also the networking and seeing how, because this, I mean, this was Jamesville. And that's where I brought it back, the crime prevention unit. I think we were talking at public safety meeting. Was that there?
Oh, I think-
What was that for? If somebody wanted to do something and I said, well, that'd be excellent if I had a group. Yeah, yeah, if I had a crime prevention unit, because it's an eye opening when you go to these bigger cities and you see like they have two evidence people in there, two evidence officers, they just take care of evidence, crime prevention, and then they have assigned, um, intake worker, crisis workers from the county there, it's just eye opening how much a bigger community can do versus a smaller community. So then try to bring back those ideas and incorporate it into our operations.
Yeah, if there's scale issues, it's probably going very long with that population.
Right, right, I would.
Yeah.
Yeah, the policies I got to review for Jamesville was their use of force and that's one thing at the end you have to do, just talk to everybody. What I was amazed by is the stats that they hardly used force in such a big community and I was, I told the chief, I'm very impressed by your stats and how that all flows out.
So right now we're at the core accreditation?
Yeah.
How far along are we to be full of accreditation?
We, we're not at that size, um, I have a size in PowerPoint too, it's anything over thirty thousand.
Okay.
In your-
For the county?
For the countywide. And ten thousand for cities.
Okay.
Not even-
Gotcha. So we would just need the core accreditation?
Yeah, and if you go on, because I know I sent you guys an email on the link for WILIA, if you go in there and you click the core accreditation, it'll show you a Dropbox and it'll give you all of them.
I clicked on it and I know the heck goes all over. No, I do. Okay.
It would give you, yeah, it's like the use of force, uh, one thing that we would not use would be like locker rooms, we don't have locker rooms at the department. And we have that bathroom and stuff, but I want to share the locker room, but yeah, we have the core accreditation standards that the county has.
How many cities on our side have this?
I'd have to look into that.
Okay. When I was doing my networking and asking some of my police friends about this, there was a couple cities that are all up there, like Oshkosh that have stuff in this, uh, there's a smaller one like Ripon which has eight thousand people, they're getting the same boat. So I asked them, I was like, do you guys have this? And the response was no, they're like, the time invested in it and the cost, what if you work to return with insurance and everything, so I was kinda curious why they're going with that, but some of the bigger cities with more tax plates are.
How often do they have to come in to, um, check the, you know, WILIA comes in, it's annually, right, like if it wants or-
No, uh, full accreditation isn't onsite, we will be a Dropbox through email. Uh, well, they set up like Google Drive, I believe, so I put it in a Dropbox and right now, we are considered wet ink because I'm in the process of changing our standards or our written directives to match the standards. I'm not saying they don't now, but yeah, we would be considered wet ink. So when I'm setting it up there, I don't have to, I don't have a proof for it, I'm covered, but right now I let you know that our evidence room is not in compliance and that is one room that I'm working on, which might fall into budget, budget time where I'm going to either have to somehow structure that room differently. But yeah.
So that, so it's not onsite, it's all like a virtual?
Yeah, they draw, yeah, I just Dropbox it, but if I was fully accredited, the, it, it's three years no matter what, I have to show, show three years moving forward because I did set a deadline because I'm deadline driven. I have to have this done by March of twenty twenty-four, I have my appointment already set up where it's gonna be in the Dropbox is, um, you do a mock, mock version of it first, which is WILIPEG, I didn't wanna get into that because WILIPEG is a branch off that is a bunch of assessors that look over your stuff before the actual assessors come in and say, oh, you missed this, 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 so you have to have a mock done and then I'll drop it for the assessor to look at. And that's every three years, so I have to show three years of work. Say, okay, here's this, so I'll have to show twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven. And a lot of people don't do this, is because it's a lot of work, the officers don't like it because reports have to be written the same way. You have to handcuff, there's procedures that have to be checked. And that's why people say it's time invested, it's a lot of work. If you ask an officer, they don't like report writing because it all has to be in a report or some form of documentation.
So on that note, since they're doing more like paperwork, so this eventually leads more like overtime for, or?
Have you- Have you presented to the PFC the same, all the information too?
No, I didn't.
Okay, I was just curious to hear that.
No, I was- It told, I was told that people were kinda questioning what accreditation is, why am I doing this? So this was an idea that was given to me to present it to councils so they have a better understanding of where their three hundred dollars is going.
I did check through the links for both accreditation sites, I mean, it does look interesting, I know the sheriff's department is on it, um, City of Hartford and a lot of the bigger cities and I see the difference between the core and the, um, the, the bigger one and I think that it makes sense that we would do the core, we wouldn't, you know, but I did see we could if we wanted to and the future aims for the bigger one if we want to, but-
Yeah, because right now, what I learned from Jamesville is our two interview rooms, the doors have locks on them, so technically I'm considered a municipal lockup and I'm supposed to have a fifteen minute check sheet on the outside of there if anybody's ever inside there, so that's what I, we pushed out to the officers and made a check sheet, so if anybody's back there, we are still in some compliance until I can have somebody come down and remove the locks from the doors. Because then we will not be municipal. Yeah, because it's just, I've stopped that I'm learning that I did not, not like-
Do you have a question?
Right answer.
There are those, have any questions for Chief?
If we weren't to do this, it wouldn't affect our ability to get grants. I've heard other, or I question what it affects. So for other local police departments, do you think they have all of this either, like Mayville or, I'm trying to think of others called one near us? I don't even know, but like Mayville for example.
In, in the long run, they're looking at police departments to be accredited, because if you see from twenty twenty, it was mandated that we have our use of force and then take all, chokehold was never in, was never even taught to us how to do a chokehold, it was the groin artery, so we have to have in our use of force policy that we do not do chokeholds unless it meets the definition of deadly force of a law, that we just don't do it. Like I said, moving forward, now we have to have our complaints. It's more of a professional transparency, making it, making law enforcement be held accountable, which we should be to a higher level, showing that this is our standard, this is our written directive, here's the proof that we've been doing this. And as you see, twenty twenty, we have this one and now we have to have no knock warrants tracked as to the state, so that yeah, they're gonna just keep adding more for the written directive to be accredited to forward to get grant money, is basically what's gonna come out.
Okay. Is there a federal deadline for you to get it done or no?
No. I don't like federal grants. It's too much work, to be honest.
How long would it be till we have the LexiPro that system completed?
See, this is another drive for me, because this was Chief Adamson's project too, that we got going and right now that fund is coming out of our training, so this is another deadline driven that'll make me sit down and get it done, where I won't have to put out fires every day, so.
I mean, that system looks really good, like, it's like we would really benefit from having that fully in place.
Yes, because I believe we have, I don't even, I wouldn't even say we have fifty percent on there. Fifty percent, because I'm, I'm between paper and online, but I mean, it's confusing for the officers too.
Right.
They're like, well, where do we look? So yeah. So it'll be completed March of twenty twenty-four.
So the LexiPro would be completed with that, like that would be the deadline for both?
Yep, that's, well, yeah, it should be done before that because that's kind of pointless.
All right, any other questions for Chief? Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is operator licenses, moving.
Uh, make a motion to approve the operator license as provided in your packet.
Second.
And then just as a discussion point, I just wanted to mention, because we had safety meeting, there's uh, five names that weren't brought to safety and I, I just wanted to say that I checked the papers, I'm, which are in your packets too, and saw they were all approved by the chief and that there was no issues with them, but just wanted to know that.
Good, any questions?
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Fromme.
Aye.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Dick Marshke.
Aye.
Jim Banzman.
Aye.
Item thirty-four, second, you have a financial statement for me. Forrest.
Make a motion to approve the financial statement provided you in your packet.
Second. Any discussion? Matt, please go to the rule.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Dick Marshke.
Aye.
Jim Banzman.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Fromme.
Aye.
Item thirty-five, second, you have the bills for me. Forrest.
Make a motion to approve the May twenty twenty-two tables in the amount of four million eight hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-two cents.
Second. Any discussion? All right, Matt, please go to the rule.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Dick Marshke.
Aye.
Jim Banzman.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Fromme.
Aye.
Next item. Do I motion to adjourn the closed session for the purpose of considering a sale of-
Second.
Any discussion?
Jim Banzman.
Aye.
Marie Fenske.
Aye.
Christine Schmitz.
Aye.
Bryce Fromme.
Aye.
Forrest Fromme.
Aye.
Dick Marshke.
Aye.